Okay, I'll call this meeting to order at 7:01. And I guess we'll stay the thread of allegiance and we'll start up.
There you go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, I'd like to read a few comments about last night's meeting, or the last meeting and tonight's meeting. The Board understands that the acoustics in this room are not perfect and the air handling system does create a bit of background noise. We will try to speak loudly and clearly, but if you think that you might have trouble hearing us, please, there's lots of seats in the front and that will help. At the last meeting, a significant percentage of the speakers went over the three minutes that was allowed to each speaker. This shows disrespect both for the other members of the public as well as this Board. This is a public meeting, not a meeting of the public. The Board needs to accomplish its business at these meetings. To try to lessen behavior, this behavior, I will be calling people out of order when they go over time. I mean, obviously not two seconds, but if you're still speaking at three and a half minutes, it's enough. Please make every effort to abide by the guidelines. They were written to allow people to make their points, share their views, and to have time to accomplish the business of the Board listed on the agenda. I will read the guidelines so that we all understand. Before speaking, please state your full name and your town of residence. The amount of time available for each person depends upon the number of people wishing to speak. When you are informed by the timekeeper that your time is up, you will be expected to yield to the next speaker. Speakers will have a minimum of three minutes, and at this meeting, a maximum of three minutes. We have a number of speakers on the list, not as many as last time, but still a number. And I also have two items to read for people not in attendance. Public input is for receiving comments on items pertaining to this or past agendas. The Board will not enter into a dialogue with a commenter. This is not the place for that. Questions or comments from the Board will be for clarification purposes only. Public comment will not be used as a time for problem solving or reacting to comments made. The Board may briefly respond to a commenter in cases when a response must be given in a timely way for the public's benefit. We do take note of your comments, as they help to inform the Board's future actions. Rudeness, ridicule, obscene or profane language, lack of respect for others, and personal attacks are not acceptable behavior. At the last meeting, there was identifying information given about an underage person, a student here, and that was unacceptable. I was not aware of it at the time, but that's not okay. There will be one opportunity for each person to speak during public comment. If you would like a written reply to your question or your request, or to have a follow-up comment, please direct these communications to mruusdboard@millriverschools.org. Please note that you are welcome to take part in the Board's community conversation sessions to have an informal discussion with Board members about subjects of interest, curiosity, and our concern. These occur the third Monday of each month at 6:30 PM. Please write to communityengagement@millriverschools.org for a link and a list of the Board members who will be available at the next conversation. In terms of when you request information, the expectation is that you will get an answer within 30 days. Doesn't always happen, I apologize, Crystal, if you're in the audience. I have not returned your email, and I will. At that, I will, I'll continue on. So approval of agenda. Thanks. Do I have a motion?
For motion.
Thank you. Second?
Question, please.
Yeah.
I've got a couple of things that I'd like to include in the agenda. One is right off this time, but I want to wait the other one until toward the end of the meeting, probably the public, I'm sorry, what do we call it, transact of the legal business.
Okay.
I think I'll want the second one on. First one is, we had a chance to put forward back this March, and we didn't do it. I think we really need to, I think we really should, only for a number of reasons. I think the Executive Committee should be put back in shape. We can deal a lot with computer and messages and stuff and deal with it. Most of the time, it's not only, it's probably going to make it yours a little bit longer, but I think it's going to help the, at least a couple of Board members, actually, I didn't really set this up, but the two people beside me, one from Wallford and one from Timoth to be on that committee. It's four discussions that the superintendent doesn't necessarily help you, conversations that the superintendent needs to have some help in making decisions on. Normally, you would just want to deal with just one person if you had it in a local district, but if he's dealing with this way, all districts are all the same, so it's going to take four people to do that. Whether or not they're going to take his, he's going to take their information, it doesn't matter. It's that if that's there, they can, he can make a decision, same with all the four districts involved, number one. And also, number two, the two people beside me could actually learn a little bit more on what's happening and certain things. Being new here, there's a lot of stuff that you can, that you've got to learn on things, and I think it'll be better.
Where would you like this conversation added to the agenda, which we're having, right? The second?
This conversation now.
We haven't, okay.
The other one, the other one will be later on.
Can we put you in after public comments and announcements?
Do me.
Okay.
Do.
Madam Chair, I request permission to speak only because what I have to say has to do with the agenda. May I have permission to speak?
Of course. Go ahead.
Art Peterson, Clarendon. In compliance with Board Policy C1, which gives me the right to add something or for consideration to the agenda, I requested the item "Board Discussion of Public Input" be added to tonight's agenda and to all agendas going forward. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything to do?
I have a few topics to request. I would ask between number five and number six, if we could add potential discussion and action on telehealth contract, telehealth contracts. That was shared with the Board earlier today, and Coral will be able to speak to that. I would also ask if, following, just prior to committee business, if we could add a request related to employee leave?
What do you want? Sorry.
Between seven and eight. Employee leave. And following that addition, if we could add just a moment for me to share current status on what we know about, information from the state about reopening expectations for the school year. So also between seven and eight, seven and eight.
All right. We had approval of the agenda. Is there further discussion of whether or not we're going to?
I have a statement that I would like to make at some point. I don't know where it would fit in.
Okay. How about you can start off public comment, but not quite yet. Okay, so if all the conversation and discussion about the agenda has finished, is that, okay? I'll call the question. All in favor of approving the agenda as amended? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any nays? Any abstentions? Okay. How about we move on then to approval of minutes from 7:21?
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Asha seconded. Is there any changes?
Yep.
Okay. Go for it.
Under public input and announcements, you read a statement, and underneath that statement, it was brought up as both a concern and a reason to table the vote to fly a particular flag at Mill River at the start of school. I made the motion to table the vote. It was not because of E4. It was because I didn't feel we had enough input, we had not allowed enough input from the community, which was sort of reflected in the next meeting. So I just want to make it clear that the reason I voted, I asked to table the vote was because I wanted more public input. Doesn't have anything to do with E4 or anything else.
Anybody else? Okay, then I'll call the question. All in favor of adopting the minutes as amended by Len's comments? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? I didn't see everybody's hand. Okay. Thank you. Public input and announcements, Liz, I guess you get to lead off.
Three people emailed me that they were upset that I turned my back on a community member during public comment at our last meeting, July 21st, and I want to publicly acknowledge their opinion. And since my professionalism was questioned, I would like to offer an explanation. I turned my back on a speaker who went two and a half minutes over their allotted speaking time. This is, in my professional opinion, disrespectful of the Board's Chair, the Board Chair's authority, the Board, and those in the community who follow the rules. Additionally, I turned my back on a speaker who publicly disparaged a student. This is unacceptable behavior. I will not tolerate anyone in our community who publicly discourages any of our children. Last, I turned my back on a speaker who accused a student of dismissing the Holocaust to elevate her own pain and suffering. This is an egregious claim that is morally reprehensible. Where is the outrage around public disparagement of a student? Where is the public outcry around a horrendous claim that a student minimized genocide? Do we tolerate public disparagement of our students, or just some of our students? In which case, which ones? Do we sit back in silence when egregious claims are made against our children, or only when the egregious claims are made against certain children? And in which case, which ones? If you are more upset with a Board member turning their back on someone taking double the public speaking time as everyone else than you are about that person publicly disparaging a child, or accusing a student of minimizing the Holocaust to elevate their own pain and suffering, I ask you to examine why that might be. We have a serious moral dilemma. When we have a higher tolerance for obstruction of work around equity and inclusion than we do for public disparagement of and egregious claims against our children, my job is to ensure and oversee the delivery of sound education that is fiscally responsible, and this is second only to first and foremostly protecting and doing right by all of our district's children. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. I will read a comment now from Madison Aiken that she submitted to be read for the Board. On July 21st, 2021, at the Mill River Union Board Meeting, Liz turned her back to a speaker making deeply problematic statements. Adults often tell kids to say something when someone is being picked on, or if something is wrong. At a young age, we talk to kids about the negative impact of being a bystander and doing nothing. Our anti-bullying, suicide prevention skills always include skill development about letting people know when something is wrong. As adults, we say silence equals violence. At the Board meeting when Liz Filskoff turned her back, she accomplished a number of things. Liz showed others she disagreed with comments being made while maintaining an atmosphere conducive to continue the work of the meeting. She showed she disagreed but did not infringe on the platform being provided to express the speaker's views. Liz also modeled away for us all to do the same, refused to be complacent in a situation, show support for a person being harmed or maligned while allowing the meeting to proceed. I suspect people with a variety of perspectives will use this action in the future. We don't need to agree to engage. We are not silenced as individuals by being elected to public servant positions. We get to show our moral standard. Mill River educators, Board meeting, or Board members, students, and community members have a powerful way to show opposition to views they deem deeply problematic while allowing the work of a meeting to continue. Thanks, Liz Filskoff, for not being silent when you viewed a statement as harmful. Your leadership is brave. Signed, Madison Aiken. And now a letter submitted by Christine Billings. To the MRUUSD School Board, Teaching the Truth. A statement I heard many times during the last Mill River School Board meeting. This was quite disturbing as a taxpayer, as who is determining this said truth? Many people in this community believe the truth is the Bible. Others believe in the universal language of love. Others believe in science. Others believe the truth lies somewhere in the middle of all the historical accounts and ravenously read other countries' points of view on historical events to have healthy debates. We can agree that man wrote the history books. In countless books, there are many opinionated facts. Public education must focus on unopinionated facts that students must critically think about and come to their own truth. Yes, their own truth. Please stop referring to teaching the truth and focus on critical thinking. Your focus needs to be on curriculum to teach kids to do math, read, and critically think. Our school standing is not good from any online resource, yet the focus of this Board is on flags and equity. Many of these ideas are of opinion and could find a healthy compromise within the school, as Tom O'Brien so eloquently explained in his opinion piece to the Rutland Herald. These ideas should be primarily taught within the home, with the school's main focus on the golden rule that spans all successful communities. John McKenna had recommended that the School Board read "How to Be an Anti-Racist" by Ibram Kendi. I would like a show of hands as to who on this School Board read this book. I have read it along with my strong recommendation to read "Winning the Race" by John McOrter. Please, Board, read both books and critically compare and contrast what both authors have to say, and which author leads us to bright and successful outcomes of moving people up instead of remaining in the never-ending cycle of division. Again, we also respectfully request that educators please refrain from referring to the students as kiddos. The term kiddo may appear cute and friendly but is regarded as slightly condescending and belittling way to address a person and shows an authoritative presence. May we propose more empowering terms such as students or learners. Sincerely, Christine Billings, Shrewsbury, Vermont. Okay. Thank you to Madison and to Christine for sharing their views. We will go to the live speakers. Crystal Usher, you are first.
Actually, second, but no one wrote on first, apparently.
Well, you're being hopeful. Yeah, no, I was that.
Crystal Usher, Clarendon, Vermont. I'll start tonight with a couple of positive comments, as I feel like my redundancy with my concerns is probably repetitive, to say the least. So on a positive note, my daughter's been working with Ms. Jolie Hill this summer, and she's really enjoyed her summer services and has had a very positive experience with her. So I would like to thank Ms. Hill for her professionalism working with my daughter. I'll also say at the last meeting, I was pleased to meet Kalen Thompson, our new Vice Principal. She seemed very excited for the upcoming school year and about working with our children. As a parent, I look forward to interacting with Kalen this upcoming school year. I have spent the last few days reviewing Board agendas, meetings, and minutes from January forward. I found that while I and others have voiced academic and athletic-related concerns dating back to last year, these items have not been on the agenda this year, other than the June 16 meeting where Kim shared an athletic integration proposal. Regardless of various viewpoints on our academic ratings and the sources that provide conflicting data, I am confident there is room for improvement. It concerns me these topics are given no priority by the Board, and our concerns seem to go ignored. Yet, while the basic planning of a retreat is on the agenda multiple times, the flag conversation, CRT, and more recently, the inclusion statement was on the last agenda and again on tonight's agenda. I am not minimizing these agenda items, but I am concerned that we don't see any need to prioritize academic, athletics, music, or art. Our JV sports teams are nonexistent. We are struggling to field varsity teams even when opening enrollment grades nine through 12. Other than a Facebook post regarding fall sports, I see no outreach related to community engagement in this area. No emails, phone calls, simply no outreach. I would suspect and hope our Athletic Director is concerned about this. Yet, as parents, we see no effort or discussion relating to identifying or improving our failing sports program. I'll end with a statement in regards to public input. We have three minutes to speak to the Board during community input, with no commentary offered, and clearly no intentions of adding our concerns to future agendas. On July 6th, I sent an email to the Board in regards to Kim's proposal regarding athletics, followed up on the 22nd to inquire on the status, and was told I should wait the 30 days. I thanked Adrian for this reply, yet still, as she stated tonight, I've received no response in regards to this email. How is the Board being transparent to our community when our concerns are going unheard and unaddressed? Setting deadline goals to agenda items will help hold the Board accountable to resolve issues in a timely, in a reasonable timeframe. While providing the community some reassurance they are being heard, concerns being discussed, and emails followed up on.
One second, Crystal.
The intent of my comments aren't to just speak or email to receive a response. I am really focused and hopeful to see the Board take action and improve our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal.
Good evening. I hope to do a better job of speaking at this meeting than I did at the last one. My name is Paula Bonazenga from Timoth. I am a taxpayer both in Timoth and Clarendon. And I was going to ask a question, not realizing I was supposed to ask a question, so all of my questions will be rhetorical questions. I'm just wondering if after the presentations at the last meeting, that perhaps some of the School Board members who were in favor of raising the Black Lives Matter flag may have reconsidered the risk assessment, especially to little white children. They are being called white supremacists by Black Lives Matter. These children will be at risk if the Black Lives Matter flag is flown. And they're also the little Jewish children, because as we know, Black Lives Matter is anti-Jewish as well. So I'm just wondering, I just want to put that out there, and perhaps the Board can reconsider their vote to raise that flag. I know that some people are opposed to it on the Board, I actually don't know who. Just putting that out there. The other thing I just wanted to address was the petition that was presented to the Mill River Union School Board last summer. And it simply asked that we, the public, have an informational meeting in person, hopefully, and that is happening now, perhaps, that we are open, and that the taxpayers, the voters, are allowed to vote on whether or not a Black Lives Matter flag and/or Pride flag. I'm not sure what is going on right now with that. That we have input. We support this school. We are the people, you work for us. I don't know if you realize, you people actually work for the taxpayers, and the students, and the parents in this community. So I truly do not understand why we cannot have input, but it certainly seems like we do not have input, because as the previous speaker said, I wonder if it's just going in one ear and out the other ear when we speak. And lastly, I wasn't sure I was going to say this, but Art Peterson, his family, Art Peterson, his family, and his friends, including myself, have been compared to the Ku Klux Klan. That is the dissension and the nastiness that has occurred because some people on this Board just insist on hanging the Black Lives Matter flag, because one student asked for it. Thank you. Was that 20 seconds? Okay. Because one student asked for it, without input from anyone. And so we're Ku Klux Klan because we want to have a little input? That's absurd. That's really absurd. And that is what has been created by this agenda, to put up these flags. Thank you so much.
Perfect. Thank you, Paula. Teresa Jackson?
Hi, I'm Teresa Jackson, and I live in Clarendon. I'm a little nervous, so please bear with me. The Black Lives Matter is an organization founded by the fascists and is a hate organization. This is not an opinion. It is fact.
Please don't raise your voice to the Board.
To fly this flag at a public school is unacceptable and is insulting. I would recommend anyone that has a child from the school's district, from the school district, and taxpayers should withhold taxes until the School Board members that support this resign. Thank you, and have a nice night.
Thank you. Richard Lee?
Good evening. Excuse me. This is a response to a letter to the editor by Nanette, I hope I'm pronouncing her name correctly, Dubin, regarding Mill River Schools Doing Worse and Art Peterson Relying on Unsubstantiated Data to Determine That Our Schools Are Failing. Carol Gearing, a teacher at Mill River Union High School for about 20 years, I'm guessing at the time, in a letter asks what Art Peterson has done to improve our schools. I have to ask Carol, in 20 years as a teacher, what has she done? Why do we remain so low in ratings? Our percentage of proficient reading is 50%. Our percent of proficient math is 33%. We are failing. You guys are failing miserably. And all one has to do is search to come up with these facts that keep questioning them. They're there, and we are. We're failing. You guys are failing miserably. I have addressed this issue in the past. Until we achieve excellence in our schools, we are wasting our time on non-issues like BLM and CRT. Nanette addresses flying the Black Lives Matter flag while Art continues to be opposed. Everyone should be opposed to Marxism. I don't know why anyone would question the destruction of our country. I listened last meeting to two ex-School Board members get up and speak. One insisted BLM is not Marxist in spite of the fact they are trained Marxists spreading Marxism. The other ex-member, John McKenna, spoke at the meeting. I went outside after speaking, and John was screaming at another person that spoke in this meeting. I asked him to calm down and have a discussion. He asked me if I was in favor of the BLM flag on our school. I responded, definitely not. I said, we fly the American flag that is totally inclusive of every American. He then called me a racist. I asked him to repeat his statement, and he said that anyone that does not support BLM, the BLM flag is a racist. I then asked him if that included black family members that did not support the BLM flag. At that point, he started to backtrack. I explained to him that many people of color are opposed to BLM. The screaming continued by both John and his wife, and I walked away at that point, realizing that some of these people are really scary. This is a disgusting attack. The next day, I became aware of posts on John McKenna's Facebook to Jennifer Philo calling Mr. Peterson and the other speakers of the Rutland area KKK. Really? Really? At this point, I have to agree with Nanette Dublin. There are people angry enough to do damage, but not by Mr. Peterson or his so-called cronies. It is time to stop this attempt to destroy America. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Riley Usher?
Hi, I'm Riley. I just graduated this year from Mill River. I spoke the last meeting about how the flag is not a topic that is spoken about at school during school hours, and since that meeting, I have spoke to my two little sisters who also go to Mill River, and neither of them have ever heard the conversation about the BLM flag talked about at school. Talking about it at the Board meeting is not helping our school or anything. We need to focus on talking about academics and sports, because I played softball. I've played softball my whole life, and not being able to play softball my junior year crushed me, because it was my life. I got to play my senior year, and it was a horrible season. We lost every single game we played, and we were, we got into the playoffs, but we decided not to go because of how embarrassing we were to play against another team, and it was a waste of time and money to go that far to play a game that we were guaranteed to lose. I think we just, we need to focus more on students and academics and that kind of stuff rather than the flag. And also, I know others have said this, but John McKenna has called And also, I know others have said this, but John McKenna has called people the KKK. If that stuff isn't acceptable at school, why should it be acceptable at a board meeting and on Facebook? And it just needs to stop because it's not fair. It's not nice. And that is racist rather than some of the other stuff. And also, if we're not allowed to have arguments at school, nobody, students get pulled apart from each other if there's a disagreement. So why should two adults be able to stand outside of the building on the school property yelling back and forth at each other with nobody stopping them? That's just, that's not professional or appropriate. Thank you.
I have to interrupt a public comment to state, this board does not have authority over how people act in the parking lot, nor do we have authority over what people put on their Facebook page.
I don't think that's what she's referring to.
No, I'm not referring, I'm not responding just to Riley. But this is a number of comments about how other people are behaving. And I just want to point out that we do not have authority, and that's all I'm saying. So, that's it. Yep. Anna May Jarrell?
I didn't have time to prepare anything today, so it might be a little disjointed. But first of all, I'll say, you know, telling someone not to raise their voice when you were willing to have someone say, when will my effing life matter? And not a word was said about that is totally ridiculous. And then I'll talk to you, Liz. You were talking about how we're bullying this young lady and how we're being so unfair. What about you calling my husband a white supremacist? I haven't heard a word. I emailed you personally, not on, on Facebook.
Where did you see that comment? Guys? Excuse me, I am calling this out of order. There will be no comments.
I sent an email and not a single response.
Where did you see that comment?
On Facebook.
Where?
On the young lady's.
On the child's page?
Yes, on the young lady's public page.
Okay, I'm adjourning the meeting. We're done. Thank you.
Is this being inappropriate?
Everybody's being inappropriate. Is this going to stop? Is this?
Hey, if you, if you all have dealt with this, when I contacted you all, it'd be over, right?
Guys, this is not how school board meetings go.
Okay, well, then you should have responded to my emails. You should have responded to my emails.
This is not going to be how this goes.
Okay, all right. That aside, I will give a good suggestion to you all. I went, my kids will no longer be attending this school. The way my family has been treated, my father, my father's Art Peterson, and I am so sick of hearing how awful he is. He has been an amazing father, an amazing community member. He's built the whole football program here that's brought in thousands of dollars to this school. He's served as the president of the school board here for many years, and he still continues to run the youth football program. You know what? His grandchildren aren't even involved. They don't even want to do it. We've all walked away from this school because we've had it. Okay, but back to my, my other thing. I went to MSJ to see my daughter's new school, and there were multiple posters around the school that said racism has no home here. Excellent. Why can't we do that? I don't care if you put it in every hall. I think it's wonderful. A wonderful reminder. Racism has no home here. Why do we have to have a Marxist Communist flag hanging out in front of the school? People are sick of it. Thank you.
Yes, we are.
Okay, I would like to caution both the board and speakers that this is not going to be a battle at this board meeting. We are here to listen. We hear you. I can't, I cannot begin to say how embarrassing this is. Everybody. Barb Peterson?
I just feel that we, if we screamed at the top of our lungs, you would say it was inappropriate. You are not listening to us. We are your boss. We have voted for certain people in here, some that we are proud of, some that we have lost all respect for. And it's very hard to keep our tempers when this has been going on for a year and a half and you don't pay any attention to anything we say. This is not a dialogue anymore. This is, we are going to put a Communist flag up in front of our school and that's the way it's going to be. As my daughter said, I'm sick of my family being maligned just because we don't want a Communist flag in front of the school. We don't want any flag other than the United States flag and the state of Vermont flag. They pay for the property. We pay for the property. Our group pays for it. When the BLM takes over our school, they can put their flag up on top of the school. Whoever owns the property decorates the property. And our government owns it. We are the government and we have paid for it. So what you should be doing is, again, your signs that you want to have over the school that are inclusive are a great idea. Having a flag up there along with the flag that already says, united we stand, it's the United States flag, that's all you need. And also, we are, the people who own it is also the state of Vermont. So you go ahead and put that up. But with those flags, nothing else. I don't care if it's a Jesus Saves flag. Nothing should go on with those flags other than what's there because that is who is paying for the school district. That is who is educating our children. So I would like to see you, and I know I'm talking to a wall here, I would like to see you act as if you're paying attention to what we say because everything you said tonight is, we are, we are listening to what you're saying and maybe someday we'll get back to you. You have a woman here who emailed you a month ago and, oh, tonight, maybe you just remembered you should get back to her. And also, like I said last week, could we please do something about the education? I have got seven grandchildren. My four grandchildren went here, they went to college, they did better in college than they did here. We moved here because it was a Mill River district. Now people are running away. You need to find a way to get the education seriously back in here. Forget the indoctrination. Let's go with education. The indoctrination is not working for you.
Thank you, Barb. Art Peterson, you have the floor.
Art Peterson, Clarendon. Everybody smile. Take a breath. It's not the end of Western civilization, no matter what happens here. I have a proposal to make to the board. I propose that instead of flying the BLM flag, we should consider, one, designing and constructing a tasteful, non-political, round-mounted display that depicts unity, diversity, and inclusion in the lawn area adjacent to the flagpole or someplace within the school. And to place welcoming signs throughout the school, as was mentioned before, MSJ has signs that racism has no home here. Anything like that that shows inclusion would be wonderful within the school. The lawn area with the flagpole sits as a circle with a 50-foot diameter with a pole in the center. There's plenty of room for permanent display to be constructed. We could have a contest among students and community members for the design and a fundraising effort to pay for it. The inclusion statement that you will be formulating can be part of the display. It is important that this display be non-political, no flags. Erecting a display inside the school is also a great idea. The students could design something that is welcoming and inclusive. It is clear that many, if not most, in our district oppose flying a political flag on the school flagpole. If the board's objective is a better, more inclusive, welcoming school system, what better way to show it than a prominent display as one walks into the school? This compromise will allow most who oppose these politically charged flags to remain part of the Mill River community. I ask that the vote taken on June 16th to fly the BLM flag be repealed and a motion made and voted on to study an alternative. And I would just close by saying, turning your back on a speaker is disrespectful, rude, and childish, and it's beneath the level of board member. Thank you.
Gail? Your turn.
Hello, everyone. I had a list of things that I was going to talk about, but I guess I'll start at the beginning. In May, I made some questions about policy, agenda, people speaking, public input. I still don't see it on the policy committee agenda, although I did speak with BJ last week and, or the last board meeting, and hopefully it'll be on the new policy committee agenda coming up. I have a couple of questions, and I think that we should get even Adrian agreed that we should like maybe update the policy on public input and maybe have it go through all the committees and just be the same for everything. And that was that. And then we don't hear back. I mean, this was May and now it's August, so, you know, that's, we lose trust that we're being heard. And I might also add that we need some microphones in here so people can hear. We've got a drama club. I'm sure they've got microphones. They've got something. Not everybody speaks loudly. I heard Adrian say tonight that it takes 30 days to get a reply. I had an email from her that said it was about a couple of weeks, so I guess I need to know, is it two weeks or 30 days? 30 days for a parent asking a question seems pretty lengthy to me. That's just like a long time for maybe a one or two sentence answer. I mean, that's my opinion on that. Mr. Younts and I had a conversation after the last board meeting, and I asked him if he would read some information on the health effects to students with, having to wear a mask all day long. I hope he's done that. And finally, I will close with saying, John McKenna was a former board member, and Adrian, I understand what you just said, that you can't be held accountable for other people, especially if they're a non-board member. I will say this, he was in cahoots, or not cahoots, but in, in working with the child that Liz mentioned on Facebook. And she was smart enough, I will say this.
We really can't be talking about students at a public meeting.
Okay, you're right. I'm sorry.
It's really not acceptable.
I'm sorry, but what John McKenna called me is unacceptable. And he rallies these people in here for your behalf. Something needs to be done about it. If he were here tonight, I would be talking to him personally. It needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Go ahead. Get your name and your town because we don't have you signed up.
Yep, you'll get it. I'm Barbara O'Brien and I live in Clarendon. About, well, I don't know, it might have been six months ago, I sent, no, it had to be last year because the prior chair was the recipient of a letter that I sent and also Mr. Younts. My suggestion in that letter was the fact that even though I thoroughly agreed with, I don't agree with Art Peterson very often, but I did agree with him at that point in time when he said two flags, American and the state flag on the flagpole. My suggestion was, why couldn't we bring some flags or a flag, the BLM flag, inside the building, in the lobby, in the lunchroom, on the stage? It certainly would have induced kids maybe to ask questions, teachers to bring up the subject with social studies class or history class, whatever kind of class. Seems to me the kids don't really care. The kids are kids. They're accepting of everybody. It's us that have the problem. And we are creating a problem for the children that go to this school. And I really not, I'm ashamed of this board, not all the board, but I am ashamed of some of you and the attitude that you take. You don't discuss education. Look at all the time we're wasting on this. There's got to be more in life than a Black Lives Matter flag because we all matter. And that flag out on that flagpole in the red, white, and blue, that's what it says. Thank you.
Doug, you, I wrote down that you wanted to speak to your suggestion.
Executive Committee.
Executive Committee. Thank you. I didn't have that note.
It's just that I think some of the stuff that we do, teaching kids basically, I think this part here would help to teach board members to come along, number one. Number two, I would prefer to see all four towns involved in a decision that has to be made, not by the superintendent solely, but by the board before we meet as a board together. It actually saves us a little time to be able to come to a decision or something there. I don't know how many times it's being used. I think it's used very, very minimally.
I don't think we've met in the last two years.
But I think with the, with the advances that we have of computers, with the advances we have of leaving messages, which by the way, I hate computers. Everybody knows that. I hope so. We get to hate phones, like computers. I think we need to open that up, whether it needs to be a vote and a second possibility. But I don't know, I think we can actually do that without, we did it during, we've done it through when we were in reorganization.
What are you thinking, I mean of, I mean, this is for everybody's question. We have an executive committee. Are you trying to say that it should be used more often?
From what I remember, we discussed having an executive committee and it was not approved as a committee.
Well, it is an official committee, but like as a, as a helpful backup if Dave requests quicker responses. What else would you see them doing?
Well, the executive committee would be easily, easily filled by the Timoth individual, by the way.
She'd sort of have to sit on.
For those that don't know what we're talking about, an executive committee is made up of four board members of different districts that come there. If the superintendent needs some help in making a decision, if he's unsure what he wants to do, what should be done, he will ask those. Instead of calling a full board, an emergency board meeting of some sort, it's done through those. And those were appointed at reorganization, the first, in this case, Wednesday in March that we had. So it's a little simpler to go through with that. I just, I want, I'd like the board members to know that we're not only educating the kids, we're educating them. Every time we go through something like this, we all learn something. I've learned a few things tonight, too. But I'm just so looking, that's what I'm just looking for. I mean, I'm not interested in getting involved right now. I've got about 30 days off, sort of free time, and then my job and my business goes nuts from then until probably the end of May. See, that, my health is not doing as well, so.
Sorry to hear that.
On both things.
I guess, does anybody else have, have any comment on that? I mean, I don't think, I don't remember us disbanding that. We just haven't utilized that as, and we haven't really had any special board meetings.
We haven't needed to.
I guess, does anybody else have any, I mean, we have, we have an executive committee. It's just not being well-used, I guess. Nothing? Okay. Doug, do you have anything else? We are moving on to the technology bid.
Can I go back for a minute?
Yes.
Being a new board member, I have no idea what the executive committee is.
It's true, you weren't at the, because you.
Well, can I have some clarity, please?
It was exactly what Doug, it was exactly what Doug said.
So it's a committee that helps expedite, if needed, expedite for the benefit of if Dave needs a decision quick?
They do not vote.
Because I'm really confused.
Well, let me just quick say, and then you can, I mean, it really was a quick get-together of people from each town. That was why there was somebody from each town, to give advice. No. No votes, no nothing, just to give advice with context. Now I'll let Dave say if he's used it.
Yeah, I guess, just to layer on that. When we've utilized the executive committee in the past, it was a representative from each town. I would reach out to the group and say, hey, here's this thing. I'd like your feedback on this. And usually that would result in a discussion. That group of four was not a quorum of the board. It was not a committee that could take any action. It would just be kind of like a sounding board for me, because as you know, the law puts me in the place of being the executive officer of the district, so I have to make some decisions that occasionally are informed by good advice from board members. So there's no action to be taken. There's no authority that group has. It's just a resource to the superintendent if the superintendent needs to access that resource.
So the committee kind of went dormant because you haven't needed to use it? Is that...
Yeah. Truthfully, I'd say the dormancy has not been deliberate. I think COVID and virtual remote status probably played into a lot of that. We were very active with the executive committee as we were going through the merger process, as we were actually talking... Doug mentioned four districts earlier. So when we did have standalone districts previously, that was a great resource for me to get a read on different ideas as we worked through our merger process, but those needs have settled overall.
And if I can, the board chair was one person who was on that committee.
Right.
From, in this case, would have been Shrewsbury.
So there wouldn't be another Shrewsbury.
Then there was one from Wallingford.
Tammy was the Wallingford person.
Clarendon and Tinmouth.
Right.
Okay.
So there was a representative from each town. And again, the board chair was one of the representatives.
Okay.
And again, I can remember we met a couple of times, a long time ago, for various reasons, where David would send out an email or whatever and say, you know, I've got this going on, I need your feedback. And we would provide that feedback, knowing that it was not voteable, it wasn't binding, it was just an opportunity to get input from community representatives.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I mean, it was set...
Clear as mud, but it's getting better.
Yeah, thank you. That's good. Well, it was set up originally... I'm sorry. It was set up originally when we merged.
Okay.
To provide the... Sort of like, we actually had advisory committees back in the day where... That represented each of the schools. And the intent was to try to provide the opportunity for each of the communities to provide input to the general running of the district.
Okay.
If I could ask a question. Can you confirm what the process was in the past for... I guess I'll address to Adrian, but anybody who feels like an answer. What the process was for appointing or electing individuals to that executive committee?
Well, one was what Len said. It was the, you know, the chair fills their town's spot. Tinmouth, there was no question, because there's only one.
And sometimes...
Yeah. Everybody else just sort of decided.
Clarendon had an issue about who would represent. And so I think we did rock, papers, scissors.
Yeah, I don't remember. I mean, it was sort of just a general, you want to do it?
Yeah. Yeah.
I guess I share... And I can't think of anything right now that we might use the executive committee for, but I do share Doug's opinion in that I think it might be useful. It sounds like it has been our resource before, and certainly a resource for Dave. So, you know, perhaps if reorganization is the time that those positions are chosen, or whether those are chosen on more of an ad hoc basis, I think it would be useful for us to have that committee ready and available. It should, it needs to be used every day once a poll comes in.
And I agree.
We have such a committee, don't we?
Yeah, my recollection of...
It's ad hoc.
I don't know that we assigned individuals when we reorganized in March. That doesn't resonate with me, but that's an easy process for you to do if you chose...
We can do rock, papers, scissors.
Sure, sounds good. And I'll say, Andy, I was there at reorganization.
Oh, okay.
And there was discussion about executive committee.
Okay. I just got confused.
I know you joined us later.
I've been going up and down a 2,200-foot mountain for the last six weeks, and my hearing's not all there, but I'm certainly having a hard time hearing people right here. And so I guess people out there are having the same difficulty.
Well, and there's air handling system, too.
When people turn their faces away...
I guess another question is, Doug, are you just bringing it up because you want to make sure that the committee still exists in case it needs to? Or are you looking to get off of it?
No, I'm not on it.
And be replaced? Oh, you're not on it? Okay.
Len is the individual that's on it from the Clarendon side, at least in my opinion. We didn't make... We didn't assign positions. One person that was a board member, is a longer board member, was on that committee for quite a while. Did a lot with like Davis, or did a lot with the changing in the reorganization that we had. Was a large part of that, and he was a committee member at the same time.
So are we just making sure that the committee still exists right now?
Yeah. Nobody knows. We got some big decisions coming up, whether the kids go to school, whether they wear masks, whether they come in in little yellow suits and bounce around. If David needs some help with us, our decision, what our town's people want... I've got probably two-thirds of out there are Clarendon representative, are Clarendon people, and I'm the Clarendon representative. My phone is always ringing if anybody wants to do that. But if David has any questions, he's got somebody that the board has designated, the people that can give information. And if somebody else wants to put that information there, they tell their representative. In this case, I'd tell somebody from Clarendon would tell Len what I think this ought to be, and Len goes on with it. Fine, but it's something to think about, that way.
Okay. Now I think I get it. Thank you. It's late, sorry.
David's one job I don't know if I would ever want to do. I really don't. You are in the crosshairs here, no matter what you do.
So we'll look into whether or not there's anything in the minutes from the...
Not something that's needed right now, exactly. Thank you.
All right. The next thing on the agenda is the technology bid. So, Brian.
Has everybody seen the movie Groundhog Day?
Yes. Yeah, I was going to say, haven't we done this before?
Yes. You approved this bid back in March. I'm bringing it back to you because the computers were not delivered in the fiscal year. Yeah, well, and that's...
We thought it was too good to be true.
That's been, yeah, the world we live in. Those computers are coming. They'll be here before the year starts, but I did want to make sure to get approval in this fiscal year so that we're definitely in compliance with board policy. So I ask that the motion be made to re-accept the bid.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Questions?
A question. We just had this big talk about executive meeting or council. What was the decision?
That we're going to look into it to see what... Whether or not we actually have anybody appointed back in March.
I just didn't want that to be the end of it. Because I'm leery about who's going to be on this committee. I have questions about who's on the committee.
Okay. Well, I suspect we won't find anything back in March, so we'll have this conversation next meeting. Brian, could you be clear that you're looking for acture solutions, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? The computer... It's 120 computers, 120 licenses total for $34,110. Are we ready to vote? Okay. All in favor of accepting the acture solutions? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any nays, any abstentions?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Discussion for telehealth. Coral.
In addition. Hi, everyone. I was asked to get a slot on your agenda this evening because I do need to have this board take some action with regard to the execution of a telehealth contract. The meeting before last, so that was your July 21 meeting, I believe, I had submitted some information to this board regarding a critical staffing shortage in special education for the upcoming school year. And in those documents, I did submit to you what my proposal was for getting ahead of that shortage. So just, long story short, I did engage in the, you know, the follow-up work that needed to be done to get a solution to this problem. So this evening, I want to let you know that I did collaborate with three potential telehealth vendors. Those companies were Vocovision, Presence Learning, and TeleTeacher. Vocovision is a company that quickly rose to the top as being the one who will undoubtedly be an excellent fit for our district for the coming year. They're extremely responsive to our needs. Their credentials are fabulous. They've been in the business for decades. And they were very quickly able to come to me with an excellent candidate who will be able to provide telehealth special education services, which will serve Wallingford Elementary School. So we were able to sort of rein this shortage in in such a way that with the provision of one telehealth provider at Wallingford, we feel like we will be adequately squared away to get through the school year. So I'm pretty pleased about that. So this evening, Ann emailed to you a draft of the Vocovision contract so that you could put your eyes on it and get a look at what it says. It's a pretty comprehensive document. I found no issues with it all, and also had our attorney review it, and nothing rose out as concern. I'm not going to be able to provide the name of the candidate publicly who will be providing the services, but the candidate is appropriately licensed and will serve our school full-time at 37 and a half hours a week. And Vocovision, we will then pay them on an hourly basis for actual hours worked, which is the way that you want this to go, believe me. So I did provide the draft contract. I've asked them just to correct one little thing, but I would like to get a motion from this board to authorize me to enter into this contract for the school year so that we can get these students served the way they need to be. And we'll take questions if there are any as well.
Give us a little information on what and how they're providing their services.
Sure. So telehealth is... Has become pretty synonymous with remote or virtual. The way that this works is that our students, whoever, you know, they are, they will essentially be getting their special education services remotely in a one-to-one situation. So they will go into a room and they'll work with a provider who is on the screen. And that provider is a licensed special educator in another state. This one happens to be from the state of Florida. But that provider ultimately takes over all of that child's special education instruction, which is under my supervision. And they sort of function like an employee of the district from there on out. It's just that they're virtual instead of in-person. And that's how it works. And so we'll have a schedule of when this provider will see our students. This provider will come to meetings with parents, just like an actual in-person employee would do, but it's on the screen. That's how this works.
Works.
It does. So actually, believe it or not... So believe it or not, we have some experience in this realm. A couple of years ago, we were short two speech-language pathologists, and we contracted with a company called Presence Learning. Believe it or not, the quality of the services was quite good. I was surprised. That was my first experience using a telehealth provider. And it actually worked very, very well. We had some other administrative issues around billing inconsistencies and things like that that weren't so helpful, but the quality of the service was actually very good. The other thing that happens with this company is that they will actually provide our school with what they call a workstation. And so that station is about a $2,000 package of equipment, comes with a microphone, a headset, any attachments that that student is going to need to participate in the instruction. And that really gets rid of a lot of the kinks, like, oh, I can't hear what they're saying, or the internet dropped out, or the screen went black, or whatever. And they maintain the cost of that station and any repairs that happen to it, and when we're done with it, we ship it back. So that is a pretty good deal in and of itself, because that prevents us from having to tie up our tech folks doing all the infrastructure work, so.
Go ahead, BJ.
I do support this, but I'd love to hear it a few months down the line, provided we do approve it. I would like to hear some feedback on how it's working.
Sure.
Just per my interest.
Okay. Yeah, we can absolutely do that. We can't provide so much in the line of student data because of what it is, but we can definitely talk about...
Demonstration.
Yeah, absolutely. Sure. The other thing with this company is they have their own platform, which they gave me access to preview, which was kind of interesting. That's not something that we had with the last company that we used a few years back, but we were able to actually log in and see what kind of instruction they deliver and what the materials are. So the cool thing is, is that all of it was able to be vetted by us, which I kind of, from a control perspective, I kind of like to have that sense of control, because then I know what my students are getting. So we can absolutely do that, BJ. Liz.
Did you mention to this person that I think the state of Vermont, Art, am I right? The state of Vermont will pay people to... Or what is it? Won't the state of Vermont pay people like $10,000 to move here or something?
Unfortunately, I could go to jail for trying to recruit that person. That's in the contract. So I'm not allowed to recruit them for five years past their date of service. So, but yes.
You can always buy them off.
They don't want us swooping up their people, but...
How are these people going to interact with the rest... With other staff? Because I know our special educators now do a lot in trying to help classroom teachers providing help.
Yep. So what happens is, as part of their platform, there's a digital system, and so what will happen is, is that anyone that's on a particular student's team will have a portal that they will all log into that's secure and encrypted or whatever, and they will be able to share data, swap notes, sort of like an email almost, but they'll be able to swap. And then as part of our contract rate, there's what they call consult time built in. So that's time for this classroom teacher and special educator to either talk by phone or to sign on to like a virtual, you know, like a Google Meets or a Zoom, just like we would do in the regular course of a school day or school week. So, yep. And the parent also gets that. So parents will then be able to reach out to this person through the portal and say, hey, you know, I have a question about what my child is working on, or whatever. They can log right in and send a note, just like you can do with some of your medical doctors at this point through their patient portals. It's very similar if you've used one of those, so.
Does this person send the progressed, like, student progress to the parents? Or does that go through you?
That is both this person and me. I will be the person that's sending it out ultimately and sort of overseeing it, making sure that the i's are dotted and a t's are crossed. But the actual teacher who's working remotely with the student will be in charge of collecting data and marking that child's progress and saying to me, hey, I think we should switch this, or try that, or whatever.
Okay.
Yep. Liz.
I'm just curious about the timeline. I mean, I know all schools, all businesses, like, everybody's having trouble hiring.
Yeah.
So this isn't unique.
Right.
I just hate to outsource a job at a state. What is your timeline? How quickly would you have to sign this contract? Because, for example, like my fiancee mentioned that his school is... Has to fill three positions, and we have a month until school starts.
Right, right.
So are we still looking for someone who can be in-person, who can be local?
So we will continue those efforts. I will tell you, I'm not optimistic. I don't hold much hope. Our postings have been out there since February, so in my world, that's zero hope for me.
You're not getting applicants?
No, none. Literally zero. So what we're going to do, the plan that I'm proposing to you, is we will contract with these folks for a school year. I really need to know and be able to assure that my students are served this school year. If it happened to be, which it won't, but if it happened to pass it in December or January, this really great local person came along, then I could ask for, you know, a release from this contract. We would pay a fee, but I could be released from it. But I like the assurance of knowing that my students are served for the year, no matter what. So we opted to run the contract just for the length of the year. Yeah.
Yes. How would you like the motion to be?
I am looking for the board to entertain a motion to authorize me to enter into a service contract with Vocovision for the duration of the school year.
Someone like to make that motion?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, then, I'll call the question. Do we have a cost?
I do. $74 per... $74 per hour for a direct rate of service. And for an indirect rate of service, that rate drops down to $55 an hour.
Okay, thank you.
What is the fee to get out of the contract?
It's $3,000.
If we happen to find the miracle, okay.
$3,000.
Julie, do you have a specific question?
So what are we looking at, at the assumed cost of the year?
So you're looking at roughly $3,000 a week. So this is about a $100,000 a year contract, which does not, is not inclusive of benefits. So that's just service delivered.
Which is going to be somewhat similar to somebody who has a master's.
It would be.
And experience and takes insurance and all sorts of other things.
Pretty comparable.
That's not, that's not.
No.
Out of line.
This is in lieu of a position?
It is in lieu of an actual in-person position. Yep, this is what we need to be able to operate this year.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll call the question. We'll be voting. Who's in favor of signing, of allowing Coral to sign this contract for us? I, thank you. I'm sorry, I blew that one. Any nays? I think everybody raised your hand. Okay, no abstentions. Thank you, Coral.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Coral.
Okay, we had so many changes.
Got retreat rescheduled?
Yeah, that's what I think, too. Okay. We do need to reschedule the retreat again. I think probably, Asha very care, you know, was very nice to have you point out that there will be a memorial service for Grant Reynolds on the same day that we had talked about holding the retreat. And it was going to interfere because I know a number of us would like to go to Timoth to pay our respects. So we need to reschedule again. Any suggestions? I'll put out there, I, I'm gone through, you know, traveling through the middle of September. So I'm not available on Saturdays, but I won't be hurt if that's the only time you guys can do this.
We do it around the holidays. We do it around the holidays. Like before Thanksgiving, so we can make it fun.
[laughing]
It's a long time away. Why are you looking at me like that, Adrian?
Because it's a long time.
Well, I know, but.
Andrea, it's also always fun. It doesn't have.
Oh, and mine, this is my first one.
No, I was a little hurt, actually.
You are not looking at me like you were.
You know, Thanksgiving.
Themed appetizers? What are you thinking?
Yeah. I'm thinking like Santa comes.
Okay. Can we do the 28th? How about we try for something a little before November?
Can we do the 28th of August?
Halloween.
You guys can.
28th of August.
You can.
Not October.
Oh.
Yeah.
What have you got in that water bottle over there?
I have no idea.
I have Saturday's booked for quite a while. Asha, yes.
Sorry, because I have my map.
Thank you, Lynn.
I'm trying to see if it's more.
Oh, it's okay. Just yell.
Um, yeah.
Not yell, sorry.
Yeah, no problem. I think as soon as you get, I'd love to try to have the retreat as soon as you get back and as soon as we're all, I would say as soon as possible, as soon as we're all.
Okay, I mean, we have Saturday.
Rough weekend, actually.
It's like, yeah.
We have a small start, too.
Yeah. We could do like September 18th, maybe?
That is Shrewsbury Day.
Well, actually, no. How about September 25th? That's a Saturday.
September what?
September 25th.
I am out of state.
It's all you.
No, it's not.
I'm just kidding. October 2nd? We're getting close to Thanksgiving at this rate.
Told you.
We're going to try.
My only question would be, do we have to have it on a Saturday?
No, we don't, actually. That's a good idea.
We're looking at setting the goals.
Yep.
And responsibilities moving forward for this board. And we're now looking at October?
I agree.
Give me a stinking break.
I think if, if people are willing to do like a two, you know, two, three hours on another night, I'm totally up for it. I mean, I'm, it's not a problem.
I mean, if we met at 5:00?
Yep, we could meet till 8:00 or 9:00.
Well, I don't know about that. I was thinking 5:00 to 7:00 maybe would be fine, but I'm not sure about 8:00 to 9:00.
We had scheduled three hours on a Saturday, but some of that was social time. So you figure you'd have to have some kind of dinner in there if we're meeting from 5:00 to 7:00 or 8:00. I'm, I'm fine with that. Suggest a date.
Um.
What's your calendar?
I think we should do the goals, like, starting at 5:00.
Yeah.
I think that is important to hit early. The social aspect of that, you know, maybe we can figure that out at another time, but.
Can I all bring a sandwich?
Let's plan for the 18th.
We can do that at Thanksgiving and have turkey. I mean.
Yes, well, the day after.
We can still get Jones' Donuts and bring it for 5:00.
We could do the 25th of August. And that's a Wednesday. It's not a board meeting night.
There you go.
Or we could do the 18th and meet early, but we already have a personnel meeting.
Correct.
That night.
So let's do the 25th.
Let's do the 25th. Let's do the 25th.
I will.
Your turn, Mr. President.
Okay, bye-bye.
Can we do like the 26th?
So I think dovetailing it maybe to that second board meeting.
Um, how about the 24th on a Tuesday night? Could anybody do a Tuesday night?
I can't.
How about Thursday?
Can't do Tuesdays and Thursdays.
That's the 26th. Then we have a training already.
You've got Finance Monday, the 23rd. Could you piggyback off of Finance?
We could. How about Monday, the 23rd after Finance?
What time is Finance?
4:30 to 5:30.
And it might even be till 5:00.
And it might even be till 5:00.
All right, let's go for it.
Let's do that.
So the 23rd.
August 23rd.
August 23rd.
Yep.
That's easy.
At what time?
5:30.
5:30.
You have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
The public is invited to this, right?
It will be a warned meeting.
So yes.
Yes.
So the public can come for the social part?
Well, I don't know if anyone's going to share a sandwich, but you might, you might get a sandwich out of it. I don't know.
Yes, you can.
If you bring sandwiches, we'll eat them.
Barb, I vote you make cookies. You can make cookies.
You're welcome.
There you go.
You know, I always burn cookies.
Okay. So the 23rd after the Finance meeting will go till we lose competence. How's that? Okay. All right. Format, I'm not quite sure what we meant by format. We're talking about goals, so I think we're.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Okay. Statement of inclusion concept. I'm not quite sure what that means. Are we?
My recollection, last time we met, you did some options. Andrea had asked if we could just bring it up to have some quick discussion of whether you wanted that to be a part of a retreat conversation or whether that was a different board meeting conversation. Is that correct?
How do you all feel?
My opinion would be part of the retreat.
I agree.
I think that's on two.
I disagree with her.
All right.
Should be a quick conversation. Should be quick to make a decision.
All right. Okay, we've blown through six and seven. We have, Dave, you had an employee leave that you wanted to put between 7:00 and 8:00?
Yes. So I have a request from employee Colleen Lewis, under the terms of the master agreement, requesting unpaid extended leave from December 1st, 2021, to January 2nd, 2022. And so I'd just like to ask the board for motion to approve that unpaid extended leave. Some more month.
And I'll second that. Okay, any discussion? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor of extending, sorry, what was her name?
Colleen Lewis.
Colleen Lewis? Colleen. Lewis's leave through the end, I suppose, of the January, I mean, of the Christmas break in this coming year. Please say aye.
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 Any nays? Abstentions? Okay, I guess that was unanimous. Committee business.
Can I do an opening? School update?
Yeah, go ahead. Oh, that was reopening. I'm sorry. I missed it. Yep.
So I just wanted to give the board an update with what we currently know about status for the opening of the school year, which is iffy, and it's not a ton, but we're expecting more information. Governor held a press conference yesterday where, in really general terms, he shared the expectation that he is recommending that all schools open the school year with everyone wearing masks. This is related to the Delta variant piece. There was talk about a 10-day window of time during which schools would be asked to gather information on immunization status for students who are eligible to have been immunized. At the moment, that's individuals 12 and up. The younger students are not even eligible for that. And there is talk about once a school environment hits that 80% threshold that the governor has been pointing to, that that would be a time where mask-wearing would not be required any longer. There are a lot of questions with that. You can imagine when those types of statements get made, or for anyone who was watching the press conference, there are a lot of what about this, what about that types of questions. The field was expecting written guidance from the Agency of Education to come today. We have, I have not yet seen that guidance via email. My superintendent's colleagues and I have a meeting with Dan French tomorrow to get a sense on what the Agency of Education is seeing that guidance looking like. I expect he'll forecast a few things, but the next few weeks will be interesting in terms of what type of clarity we get or do not get around what the expectations will be for masks or any other remediation efforts. The interesting distinction between a year ago and now is we're no longer in the state of emergency. So obviously, under the state of emergency, the governor and state agencies had authority to direct things. Now those directions take more the form of recommendations or strong recommendations. And that's complex for the field to sort out because there are, there are politics built into recommendations and figuring out how to navigate that. My assurance to you is a number of things. One, I'm in contact with, with colleagues throughout the state, as well as folks at the agency, to try to get a read on what's going on there and what the way of the land is. Two, as those things develop, I'll let you, you know as soon as possible. And obviously, our employees want to know what the deal will be, and our families want to know what the deal will be. So my communication will be as quick and as thorough as it can be as soon as I have something tangible. I would have loved to put something out today, but we're just not there. I would be, I would be pretending if I had, if I had facts to share. So happy to open it up to any questions at this point in time.
David? I would encourage you to utilize us for input, or that executive committee wants to find out who's on that as much as possible.
Yeah.
As representatives of the community.
Yeah, you know, BJ, my thinking at the moment, again, let's contrast last year to this year. So last year, under the emergency order, boards had the ability to delegate, you know, that decision-making to, to the superintendent entirely, and that's what our board did. And I think that was effective, and that, that worked, and I appreciated that. Without the state of emergency, there's this interesting dynamic around where that authority fully lies, and nobody's really sure yet where that lies. Obviously, in local control dynamics, the board does have some say in that. My intention would be to gather information, figure out what our internal team thinks is the wisest and most reasonable approach that complies with the requirements that we're given from the state. And then I'd like to bring that to our full board and say, hey, folks, here's what we're looking at, here's what we're thinking. I'd like your feedback on that. In my ideal version, we would see board consensus on whatever the approach was going to be, because an undivided board is better than a divided board. So would be seeking consensus like, yeah, this makes sense, and then proceed from there. But every step of the way, I'll make sure you're informed and in the loop and help with decisions.
I would mind being a few extra emails. So.
Thanks, BJ.
Anybody else? Okay, well, I mean, I'm urging caution, and I was still trying to figure out, do we, is there an interest in making sure that we have the executive committee available today for these conversations amongst the board? We're not interested in doing that?
No, we can.
Oh.
When I do that, it's fine. But it's not something that we're going to be using, you know, here, supposedly, but it'd be a more private thing when board meetings aren't being held any one time or whatever. Just that's what it's designed for.
Well, but that's what I was saying, if he wanted input before he came to the next board meeting with his advice.
Yeah.
Maybe just. Would you like to? Do we have any from, one from Clarendon that is, I mean, Timoth and Shrewsbury are taken?
Well, I'd put Lynn up as, as the hand up.
There you have it.
I mean, this isn't really an official committee, so we can just make an arrangement.
There's likely a time he's going to be going off in March and such, though there may be a, there may be a substitute.
We're good for a while.
Well, it's till the next.
It makes me, yeah, it's all right.
So you're Clarendon rep?
Sure.
Okay, Wallingford.
I represent Wallingford. Bruce doesn't mind.
Wallingford members?
I vote for BJ.
But that's, I'm fine with that.
Trying to get somebody for the executive committee.
How did it?
BJ just, just volunteered, so, so does Wallingford need to?
There you go. That was easy.
All right.
That's called a bounce pass.
Okay.
There you go.
So you have your, 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 your advice committee.
Lynn, Asha, Adrian, BJ. Correct.
Yep. Understood.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, committee business. Personnel.
Yeah, you're not going to like me.
No, I know it because you've got a lot of stuff.
I.
It's okay.
And I don't know the best way to approach this. I don't really want to go through each of them individually.
You can do a slate.
Because we'll be here till midnight.
Just do a slate.
Yes.
Since the committee already went through everything, can we just lump it all together?
Since the committee already went through everything, can we just lump it all together?
Yeah, that's what I was hoping.
Yep.
Thank you, Matt. So I guess we have seven contracts that we need to approve. For Amy Ridlin, 1.0 full-time equivalency health services supervisor. Contract for Steve Allen, 1.0 full-time equivalency special education parrot educator at Clarendon. Laura Alexander, 1.0 full-time equivalency special education parrot educator at Clarendon. Jordan Boudry.
Boudry?
Boudry, that's, yep, like you said, 1.0 full-time equivalency pre-K parrot educator at Wallingford. Cassidy Humphrey, 1.0 full-time equivalency general ed parrot educator at Wallingford. Kiara Notton, 1.0 full-time equivalency pre-K parrot educator at Wallingford. And Nalati Shah, 1.0, how do I do on that one?
Natalie. Natalie. How did, what did you say?
You did, well, it says now.
You did great, but my typo says Nalati.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I was like, how did you do that?
I thought I was doing pretty good.
Yeah.
You did well. Natalie Shah, sorry. I apologize, Natalie. 1.0 full-time equivalency special education parrot educator at Wallingford Elementary School. And I would make a motion to approve those seven contracts even without misspelled words.
Yes. And Matt is seconding?
Yep.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. I'll call the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Cool, okay.
Okay, we've only just begun.
Everybody said yes. Go ahead.
Next is the coaching slate approval request. Ah, boy. And again, I'm going to go through these varsity football, varsity assistant football, high school football, high school football, high school, middle school assistant football, middle school assistant football, middle school football, boys varsity soccer, girls varsity soccer, girls varsity soccer assistant, fall golf, VCC.
Cross-country.
What's that?
Varsity cross-country.
Varsity cross-country and middle school cross-country. Middle school soccer, boys and girls, high school fall cheerleading. I make a motion that we accept all of those.
Second? Okay, Matt. Discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for your cooperation.
Is that it?
I hope so.
Wow, nice job.
I'm done.
Thanks.
Whether that's it or not.
Policy. Do you have an update?
Um, I don't think we've had a meeting.
I know, I was saying.
We haven't had a meeting. I know we have another one coming up next Tuesday. Really, really hoping that we can get that transportation one finished. I think we had a lot of fun being in person and being able to review a policy last night. We have some of the rotations, and I've been talking with David about bringing C3 in the public comment as requested by the public to review, probably not in our next one on Tuesday, I don't think we'll be ready for that, but in a various one coming up soon. So that's where that stands.
Okay. Buildings and grounds.
Building and grounds, we are getting ready for the big rush with kids coming in. I talked to a few of the people here, and I gave them a lot of credit. Normally, if any of us have been on the board before, you're going to look at the school three days before it's ready to open up, and there's trash everywhere, and it smells and stuff. Three days later, it looks like Taj Mahal, it's just gorgeous stuff. And I said, you guys do a great job, so keep them that way. We have on order two school buses, and COVID has sort of kicked our butt a little bit there in limbo when they're going to get to us. It hasn't been a big issue, except for one thing, that one of the buses, at least, that we are going to be taking out of service, we intend to have a repair or two, so we're sort of putting some money into repairs for buses we won't be having. I don't think it's going to last very long. It's usually a pretty easy, middle of the winter is when the damage has come. So they're going to be coming sometime soon. We did get the one from Rutland that we didn't get from Rutland, we got from Bennington, but that's here, and that's really a big bus. A lot of the stuff we're doing in the summertime with the kids, we don't need a big bus to drop them off, there's four or five, we can all put them in a smaller van. The van, I think, is a six person, if I remember right. And you can drop kids off there, it's got all the lights and everything it needs that way. Another COVID problem is in the Tinmouth. Most of us have, we've been talking about it, that they've got a roof that needs to be changed, there's some slates up there that are gone, we're going to put all new ones in there. The problem is the asphalt shingles haven't been showing up. That's also a thing from COVID and holding things down. They do need about a two-week window to do that, but they also need to do that. So what's going to happen is that we'll be able to do the roofing and maybe making sure kids don't come out certain doors for certain times, making it safe and all. I'm sure the company that's involved is safety-conscious, everybody pretty much has to be. And lastly, remember we were talking about a water leak in Tinmouth? The water line was coming somewhere, we normally use 25, 30 gallons, but we've been putting in 16,000 at a time. They did find the leak, it was actually close to the building, so they were able to make a quick connection, go near their insert into the building and tie into that stuff that's there. So that's been completed, that's all done, our local guys. I believe we're going to, I'm going to try to have a meeting the first Tuesday of September, I don't know the date yet, but that will be there. We'll see how much we can make up by then. By then, we'll have a school going, hopefully, and filled up with kids, and not one of them is sick.
That would be very.
That would be really nice. We all want to pray for that. I have a grandson who's going through it, and his family, he is now quarantined, his family there, one out of the five did not have it, and one out of the five is now in the hospital, he's been in there for a week and trying to get the best of it before it gets the best of him. But I wish him good luck, but he'll be up his quarantine by the end of this week, we'll see how he does.
Roofing personnel, normally all those kind of things get done during summer. How do we handle personnel that are on site that we don't know?
Yeah, you okay with me deferring to Gary?
Yeah.
Gary, can you talk about the during the school year contractor accountability, background check, you know, all that type of stuff?
We actually have contractors all year long in our buildings, in one way, shape, or form or another. We do require, when we have COVID restrictions, that they follow.
Can you come up so that they record it, so that people hear your answer?
Yeah, we have contractors in our buildings all year long, and we do require that they follow whatever restrictions we have for COVID requirements. All of our contractors have to go through background checks, they have to come in and sign into the buildings. We don't allow them into the building unless, you know, we know they're coming, and we tend to try to notify all the principals that somebody is going to be in their building. Whenever I can, I escort them through the buildings as well.
I mean, these guys are going to obviously be there for a while.
Yeah, a couple weeks, and they're working outside, in this case of the Tinmouth project. It's a roofing project, so they'll be outside. They have very little need to be inside the building for this project.
Have a court potty and that kind of thing.
That's their responsibility, correct?
Okay.
Yep.
They're not coming in the building, okay. Thank you. Sorry, but cautious. Anything else, Doug?
Oh, no.
Okay. Anybody else have questions? Okay. Community engagement update, I don't know if anybody.
I'm ready.
Okay, go.
I looked it up ahead. So we have our next meeting Tuesday, which is the 10th, at 6:30, and that is the, you know, board committee meeting to discuss, and then the community conversation that's up next is August 16th from 6:30 to 7:30, and the folks that are up for that are Adrian, Asha, and Matt.
That's from 6 to 7, 6:30?
6:30 to 7:30.
6:30, 7:30. I know this, but writing it down. Okay. All right, thank you very much. Finance.
Finance, good evening, everyone. We have the following pay orders and payroll for approval this evening. For FY '22 from food service, we have a warrant in the amount of $9,548.13. For fiscal year '21 from the general fund, we have a pay warrant in the amount of $607.01. For fiscal year '21, we have a pay order from the general fund in the amount of $13,903.67. And for fiscal year '22 from the general fund, we have a pay order in the amount of $60,882.27 for a grand total of $94,941.8. And for payroll, dated July 22nd, this is all FY '22, we have payroll in the amount of $3,080.47, dated July 30th, we have payroll in the amount of $64,820.55. And we have payroll dated also July 30th in the amount of $115,856.56 for a grand total of $183,757.58. And I move that we approve the payroll and these pay orders as presented.
Do you have a second?
Sure, I'll second it.
Any questions? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
And our next committee meeting is August 23rd at 4:30 before our retreat at 5:00.
Thank you. Okay. We have transact other legal business. Was there, okay.
Yeah. This is usually when George makes funny and puns, but, sorry. "I'm resigning my position as a member of the community engagement committee effective immediately. At our meetings, we've struggled to develop ideas and ways to encourage community participation. We wanted to let the community know that we valued their ideas, comments, questions, and even their criticisms. Public input on the board agenda is community engagement. We should be listening. The childish, unprofessional, and disrespectful action by Liz Philskoff, who is a member of the committee, is disappointing and embarrassing. I will not be part of a committee that accepts this behavior. Liz's reasoning that the individual who was speaking went over the allotted time is not valid. Many did, and I compliment Adrian. She respected each person's comments and allowed them to finish their statements. No number of retreats or get-togethers will accomplish what some time taken to listen and engage in conversation could accomplish. If we wish to be inclusive, equitable, and really value our community members' input, we need to put aside our personnel agendas and just listen."
Thank you, Len. Does anybody else have any other legal business? Okay, we will go.
Doug, I forget.
Do you have something?
Two topics and something.
Yeah, I think what I'm going to do.
I thought, that's why I looked at them.
That's a little iffy. What I do, I'll talk to you about it, because I got an idea that I can actually talk to you, and it'll, what I want to have to do is will be done that way. Be safer for me.
Okay, so no?
No.
Okay. Agenda building.
I've got something under agenda building. I would like to formally request that we add Art Peterson's proposal to the August 18th board meeting. Whether you like Art Peterson or not, he is somebody who represents a large group of members of this community, and he is also a resident and taxpayer and should be heard. I personally have a lot of respect for Art. I can almost guarantee you that the feeling is not mutual, but I feel that we need to at least consider what he has requested of the board.
And that is to have a discussion?
To have a discussion about a display outside.
Okay, I wasn't sure what you meant.
Yeah, sorry, so.
So just to add to the.
Yeah, to the board meeting on the 18th, I feel that we should take up his proposal and talk about it.
Of the.
Yep, of the, yeah.
I would also.
Raising and the.
Yeah, and the fundraising of it, and everything that he proposed, I feel that we should be added. He's a resident and a taxpayer of this community, he represents a significant number of people in all the district towns, and I feel like we owe it to them to let them be heard. So.
Okay.
I would also ask, and I think I have in the past, but I'll ask again, just in terms, the school year has ended, just looking, and I'm not trying to point fingers, but I would like to know what the test results have been from last year, what the retention, if that's a thing that happens anymore, I don't know, retentions, attendance, I would just like to know, how do we do?
I think we're, I'm hoping to hear that as part of the retreat, as part of our goals discussion.
Well, we need to hear it before we talk about goals, because how the heck can we set goals if we don't know what we did?
No, but I'm saying to say, how did we do on the goals before, and that was, because I had asked about the same thing.
Yep.
Because Bruce had mentioned that he wanted to see the, I forgot which testing.
Yeah, and I think that's critical.
Yes. So, yes, go ahead.
And Len, that's, administration has been targeting the retreat, which has been a moving target.
I'm sorry.
To bring all that information for the board.
Yep.
To consume and consider as a figure.
Thanks, and I appreciate that.
Okay.
And I also realize that it's been a moving target.
It has, I know. I thought we were going to, we already had that conversation.
It's New Year's Day now.
Or Groundhog, whichever you choose to look at it.
Wasn't that a movie?
Yes, it was.
Yes, Andrew brought it up earlier.
I know, that's why I said.
Okay, anything else that anybody wants to see specifically?
Can we, I'm not going to be here next meeting, but I would really like it to be discussed about the public input part of, and the board. I think I sent you an email.
You did, and I was hoping that BJ, we were going to have that conversation.
Are we going to have that conversation?
During the committee meeting, it was, it's on the agenda, I thought.
Is it on?
We have to finish up transportation.
That was the C3 he was referring to.
And then C3.
But the other part of the email.
You mean this, this part?
The statement that's red.
Right.
Okay.
I'm hoping that when we start talking about the policy around C3, the policy, we can also come up with some standard dialogue that is supposed to go on each of the committee agendas and on the main one to standardize all matters.
I have another question in regards to community input. When we send out the agenda for our next board meeting.
Right.
Where is it put, what the subject is for the public input for that?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Is there for every board meeting, like a subject we would like to hear from the community about?
I mean, public comment has, in the past, has never been structured, so structured. It is just what people want to say.
Want to say.
Restricted either, it hasn't been.
Right. I mean, it's unrestricted.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay.
For right now.
Okay. No, and I think, I was hoping that that would be part of the policy committees, where we're addressing all of it.
Yeah, I mean, okay.
The entire thing, just because it's become a topic of conversation.
Yeah, because I have a comment, but I'm not sure where to say it, but.
For tonight, or for during that?
Just reflecting on the, oh, never mind.
As, I know we're going to be discussing it, like I said, not the next meeting, because I think we have to finish.
Transportation.
Transportation. Hopefully, the following one, send it to me so I can make sure I include it and part of that.
Okay.
At the very least, David?
You know, just thinking about that next policy meeting, I suspect the transportation will wrap up relatively quickly.
Okay.
It might make sense, get it on the agenda. If you don't have time, you could always get bumped, but I think get it on, and that way you can start the conversation and tease out all the, you know, Mr. Peterson's comments, Andrea's thoughts, Len's comments, like, you can get it all there to start chewing on it.
We'll start chewing on it, and I'm adding that now, so.
Awesome.
Thank you, Google Docs.
So can I just, like, I know in the begin, in the input, we are trying as a board to move past what has happened, and I'm not, because I don't want to, we are trying to move past. So our policy committee and all of our other committees are trying to reflect on to everything that's going to be better for the children. Policies, personnel, everything, and I think that, for me, it's very hard to sit here and listen to the flag keep being brought up, because school starts in three weeks, two weeks. And we are working a lot behind the scenes, behind the board, this meeting, and you're all able to see the community, you know, all be able to see the committee meetings and stuff. And I just want to say that it was very frustrating last board meeting to hear a lot of what was going on, and then to have it brought up again, because I feel that from now forward, we need to reflect on our students. Our students need to be our priorities, our staff needs to be our priorities, and our kids need to be the education. I, being a parent, single parent who had to go through pandemic education, and then, and work full-time, and also be a board member, know the frustration of a lot of the community members that are out there. It was very hard. It was a hard year last year. And we are working hard to not have it so hard for our children and our students and our employees, that this coming year not be that much of a struggle as it was. And I'm sorry, Adrian, for doing this.
What?
But I'm just, I am so frustrated that because of flag, we don't need to discuss it anymore. I feel like, I feel like now it's okay, it's been, and I wasn't here before this, before when it was discussed, but I'm here now, and I'm feeling like, why don't we move on? We need to talk about our kids, we need to talk about our students, we need to talk about filling the position that Coral has and has had posted since February, so that we're not doing telehealth. Why are people not applying? Why are we not able to fill it and do that? What about our, we have a, what, middle school cheer position open? What about our sports programs that have vacant positions? What about all of this other stuff that's benefiting our students? We need to focus on that. And I know that the flag is going to fly out there, but seriously, we need to look at our school year that is coming up. Our kids suffered a little bit, we all went through struggles, we all had a hard time through the pandemic, and it's not over like we thought it was going to be over. We need to seriously just start looking at our students. I've had a really hard time, even to the fact that I'm up for election in March, and I'm not quite sure what I'm going to do. I've had the hardest time going home to my son and having him ask questions, and his friends ask me questions. But I'm sitting here because I want the education to be much better, and I want our children to be focused on. And I understand the flag flying is not something that we all wanted, it's flying for three months. But in those three months, we need to focus still on the students that are sitting in this school that we need to provide education for. And it also needs to come from our community members. Our public and our community in all of our districts need to help the school, knowing what we need to do to help our students. I'm sorry.
That was very. I'm done. Thank you, Andrew.
Stayed it, Andrew.
That was well said, we appreciated it. Thank you, everyone. Um, I think, unless. Unless.
Tough act to follow.
Yes, I know, I'm just sort of like, okay. Unless we have an executive session required, we've gone through agenda building.
Yeah, we do not need executive session.
Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
One?
Okay. By consensus, thank you very much.